Yes, it's like how do you?
Oh, it's just they post it back city, but every department like police finance. It's a way to get to know government functions and how it works. And they just look up some questions in the city signs. Oh, like they went into a police station and stuff like that even though we had and did.
That's great. We usually look at it as a home view of the city's citizens.
They have a shooting range, so police, they each have their own private shooting range.
Maybe a shot to fire a chaser if you wanted to.
Yeah. Like we have C V D one and talked about more stuff, you know?
That's great.
Yeah, it's not shooting. Yeah, we don't need to go back and stuff, but.
You need to break cases?
No.
Do these have power?
Sure, no, I get, I usually do a little idea.
I don't.
There's a question on this list?
That's true, that's true. Hi. Yeah, come on, pretty legs there. I recognize.
Yeah.
Were you nervous? We were all nervous.
Did I miss something on this page?
Yeah. We can do introductions in a minute with this Stephanie, our G I S analyst.
That's a dozen.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, if everyone here tonight.
For Jalen Allen and Brian. Sam.
Can you still tell them?
Have fun spring break, please.
What is that? I need to make sure.
If we could, at least for some quarters.
Yeah, we could for us. I don't know. Yeah.
It's actually funny because we're going to Denver for a couple of days and it's, I'm like in that, if we could have just had spring break a little earlier, it could have gone to this planning thing. But.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, not that it's not a pretty penny to go to that when, when work isn't paying for it or, you know, it's pretty expensive. Are you, are you about the national?
Yes.
And we went to it when it was here in Seattle.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if then allowed you to go.
Okay.
Potentially, potentially, yeah. Yeah.
That's what I got. It was the same as ours. Ours was the fourth, seventh, seventh. We go.
Are you guys telling them?
I'm just coming up to Birch Bay with some also.
I'm gonna be a Donin too.
What's that?
I'm gonna be a Donin as well.
Oh, alright.
I don't want to be that. It's my wife's.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Sherry Cooper in. So fast, but I was trying to say like, we can just do it real quick. We can just do it real quick.
Yes, the next team package is, hi guys.
Alright, well just let me know when you guys are ready to start recording.
Yeah, I think we're here, so I think we're ready.
Okay, um, the second and the final is word one. What's this?
It seems like it is recording. It's automatic.
Just, okay.
It seems like it is counting.
Yeah.
Well, you're also. Alright, we're good.
Come on.
Alright, a beautiful call to order planning commission on Wednesday, March 18th of 2025. Um, to our role models, Commissioner Matt La.
Present.
I am Commissioner Teal. Commissioner what?
Present.
Commissioner Fovers.
Present.
And Commissioner La. Present. And that's it for tonight. So we'll move on to item number two for the opportunity for public comment on non agenda items. Uh, we do not have anybody here in person. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak for something not related to the agenda items?
Sherry Cooper is online. Sherry, would you like to speak to anything?
I'm good, thanks for asking.
I'm here.
Hey, and as a reminder, we're the planning commission and we are here for recommendations to city councils also. Um, so whatever we approve is actually a recommendation for approval for a city council approval. That's all I'll say for tonight. We don't have a big audience. Um, move on to the approval minutes from February 19th. Item number two, we're just looking for motion or any changes.
Most of them approved.
So. On paper.
Aye.
It's not opposed. So we'll move on to item number four, introduction and public hearing and recommendation for the environmental protection in critical area. So I'll turn over to staff to present.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so again, this is Stephanie Ma, she's our G I S analyst to help with, um, some of that. Oh, hi. With all the mapping and so she's here to answer questions and be a part of our fun night. So yes, these updates are coming from our comprehensive plan effort where department agencies, commerce and department fish and wildlife, provided us checklist of review when we did the comp plan. Um, and so a lot of that was policy related and general global type comments. And we have identified some amendments from a technical memo that OTAC did. We use them for a lot of our scientific analysis. And so they have proposed, um, they looked through our municipal code and proposed, um, 10 amendments. And what we, uh, like I said, this is related to the comp plan. We require it every, um, 10 years when we do a major update. Um, if there are same things we need to do to stay abreast with best available science. If you don't know what that is, it varies depending on the scientist. So there are differing opinions, um, but there are manuals that are updated. So a lot of our code updates are references to new manuals, preferences to new state law, um, and science changes. Um, the last time we did this update was in 2018 and that was more substantial changes, I would say. We, we made pretty significant changes to some of the wetland manual that we adopted, which changed those buffers. Um, and we had some stream buffer increases. And I don't know if any of you guys were around them, but we also have, um, on our maps, um, uh, exceptions for areas that are already built out. So, um, we're happy to walk through the map series as well. But the map series is adopted by reference in our code. It's not a part of the code. And that way, if we have new information, um, like yesterday, we were looking at the wetland map and that, and adding in some of the wetlands that have been delineated with development. So that's kind of more of a living live document. The code updates, like I said, those kind of 10 minor ones that we're really looking at, um, are what triggers the hearing and what triggers the notice to agencies and all that. So, um, let's see if there's anything else to mention. So I think that's a good intro. Is there anything else to add at this point? We could, we could, um, answer any clarifying questions. We get over the hearing and then close it and then hand over the more details if you want.
Perfect. Yeah, let's ask some clarifying questions to the manuals and public hearing and we'll be talking. Any questions from Commissioner?
I think the question wasn't answered, is asked is answered with the extension of the protected areas for the wellheads that now extended. Let's hide more into the drainage here because they're going to those, those lines.
Yes, a report was done, um, yeah, so the report was being done about the same time that the maps were being made a couple of years ago. Um, so I believe these, the last round of critical area maps were created in 2019. Um, and they finished up the wellhead study area in April of 2020. Um, and so on that original version of the maps, it said it had just produced a 300 foot radius around the well. I'm not sure why that number was the one that was chosen. It was before my time here. Um, but I do know when they went back through the study, they did modify that to show the correct for the 10 year protection area, which is this increase that we're seeing now.
It covers most of the cities.
Yeah.
That's what we have a huge impact on how the streams, streams, when they're, I guess they're snowy.
Right, it's, um, you know, groundwater protection. Um, and since we are sole source aquifer, that's where our water comes from. Um, really what helps us with compliance with a lot of these regulations is making county surface water design. We really adopt that by reference. And so that really requires infiltration, filters, um, just, you know, everything is treated on the site. It doesn't leave unless there's a overflow event of a storm. Um, but you are required to, if you put in impermeas, um, which is also required if you have vehicles and such. So they don't, it's treated then as it drains. Sure. Yeah.
And yeah, that is also why the city does not apply a lot of the ice.
Right, right. We mentioned that several times in public, people ask why our streets are not as clear as snow. It's because we're protecting drinking water.
Even though you drive on 202, you can tell when there is that long.
Uh, the other question I had was, this is a matter of scale thing. I can't really tell whether the buffers were extended on this map for the, just figure the, for the.
Not given this.
Um, did you conclude the wider buffers that were suggested by the Sandhull Tribe?
They did not completely, no. Um, and that's where I was kind of getting into, that is the debate, that is the comment we might continue to hear.
Okay.
Um, and so what we're hearing from some of the agencies is that, you know, we really need 100 feet for pollution removal across the board. Um, our map, again, it varies. A lot of times we do meet the hundred, sometimes we're over that. But there are areas where we have 25 in, um, Orser Woods and Silver Creek, for example, that are existing developed. Um, we also have levees, so that's kind of a nat, in a way, a natural barrier. Um, so typically the bigger streams have bigger buffers. And then for the type F, um, it references a, um, the shoreline code because a shoreline permit is triggered if you are within those areas. And those vary, you know, 100, there's an inner and outer buffer in some cases, in some cases they're 85. Um, so right now we're, we're holding on some of our code functions that we are allowed to increase buffers on a site by site basis depending on, um, the analysis from the professionals. We are required to have no net loss of function. So there's critical area studies that are done for each development that must show that. And it's evaluated by multiple qualified professionals. So we have buffer averaging and we have the ability to increase buffers. Um, and yeah, I mean, you could argue, there's more we could do, there's.
Right, I was just wanting to make sure that I can read the map as well as I can on the face of this.
Yes, yeah. And we are not proposing any bufferties at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just for the record, this is Commissioner Matt La.
Oh, sorry, I should have said.
Just for the record, it doesn't blow as nice, but.
Missed myself before I asked.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
And then Commissioner White.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Matt La's kind of regarding the Snoke County Tribe feedback. Uh, so, uh, I guess that's one thing I was hoping was going to be also incorporated in this document. And I mean, or at least referenced so that we can look at what they had to say. You, Jimmy, you seem to indicate that their feedback had not been incorporated.
Right, so to clarify, we have a letter from Two-Later Tribe, um, that was received. We did not get a letter yet from Snoke County Tribe.
Ah.
Imagine it would be similar. So our, um, the technical memorandum from OTAC, um, and our back and forth with the comp plan, um, has, has addressed, we feel, the recommendation that they're, they're saying, consider this. We are saying through our best available science review, we did consider it. We feel like there's areas like Meadowbrook and Tollgate where we have thousand foot buffers, um, that, you know, where would it actually be applied, you know, practically on the map? Um, and we've also run into cases where it's like you have existing development that has a 25 foot buffer. And then you have this lot that hasn't been developed and then you go to the next one and it has a 25 foot buffer. So it's, you know, it's hard to say by increasing the buffer on that one in between, you're going to see an ecological benefit. So, um, you know, a lot of the other cities are, um, going to be wrestling with this this year. Um, and we know that King County is, is increasing. All the other cities, it's hard to say what they're going to do. Um, and so, you know, this could come back, but, um, but this is really the basis is our, is our analysis from the, from OTAC on this. It's saying that we have different code criteria that also will protect the environment in the shoreline.
Thank you.
Period, Commissioner Matt La's found your hair. You have a letter. I, did I?
Oh, it was in the packet that, that, the, that's the most recent.
Yeah, I can give you a copy. Um, it was sent out yesterday, revised with their addition of their, um, letter.
Yep. So I'm curious, sorry, Commissioner Teal, um, I'm curious in the report findings of that. So, uh, the second paragraph in that where they're talking about, you know, type S streams from current 115 feet to between 105 and 235 feet. So.
Just for reference, what page of your packet are you on?
This is page 10 of the packet. OTAC memo findings fact.
Right, yes, okay.
And so does that mean, you know, depending on the type of tree that is there, like that would, you know, that's part of what changes that distance?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so if, if someone has a tree, let's say it got bugs or it died or, you know, something happened to that tree, then, you know, it talks about replanting a tree, but you can't replant a tree of the same magnitude as water. You know, it would be very difficult if it's a really large tree. So what happens then?
Well, so it's an averaging tool and if you, if you wanted to open up the, um, the R M Z volumes mapping tool, you can just kind of see what it's showing for like, again, the recommendation. And so I think it's taking an average of the tree height. It's really trying to get it up for up here above the holes where there's no salmon. It's trying to get at shading and cooling. Um, and, you know, we've known for a long time, the more space, the better, you know? So, I mean, I don't think they would have a, an answer to that specific question. Um, because you're right, there's a lot of areas. So I think they've taken kind of the tallest trees in the area and just applied that blanket because there's going to be areas where we don't have trees. And also, again, we have levees. So even if you have trees over here and you have a levy here, you know, it's not going to shake, it's not going to reach that distance. And, um, you're not necessarily going to have shading or, um, natural river shoreline on the other side of the levy.
Right.
So, um, you know, if you do a levy setback or you have opportunity, then that's another thing, but. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, you know, it's, it's just a tricky thing. Yeah, the other thing is.
It's coming in.
Yeah, that's the thing. We're in an urban, urban area, we are encouraged to accept growth and develop. And then this is kind of the, kind of from the other angle and it's like all these competing interests. And so, you know, it will be easier for the county to enforce that with a bigger buffer. You know, they have more space and it's less dense and, um, it's not developed, you know, to the extent like the cities are. So, um, yeah, it'll be interesting to watch, um, what other, what other cities end up doing. And they've already started, some have said, you know, just no, and some have said we'll make some adjustments. And, um, you know, and we thought, well, we could put in Meadowbrook and Tollgate and say, yeah, okay, on average, cities meeting it because we have thousand foot buffer over here or whatever they are. And then that's not really, it's open space, it's public land, we know it's not going to be developed. We don't need extra credit for it. It's just.
So important note too is that the best available science is not a one and done rule. It's not a one size fits all criteria. So what we've done with the memo with OTAC is demonstrated in our circumstance, with our context. And shortly, we feel like what we have, that's conform to the best available science.
Is that why, let's see, one of the spots in the code took out like reference to, I'm trying to get my name. Um, we took out the reference to one of the reports. The item was probably based on why, you know?
Um, so, and that's a couple of pages further. Yeah, I can't reflect it all, but page four of that, um, of the memo, that, that lists the 10. Um, so trying to see which one you were talking about.
There's a deletion of the stream crossing standard on the.
Also, there's even definitions.
Right.
In actual 13, which I'm happy with your definitions, but.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that is to do with changes in the state code, state law as far as how they want to define it. Yeah. And then. Streams. We added a section on buffers in ordinary watermark.
Yeah, so I think the reference in one E, getting rid of the stream crossing guidance, because if you look at the one intro, it's referencing a more updated 2013 Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife water crossing. So it's probably that that.
Yeah, it's updated.
Other session was just a carryover, maybe a couple of previous things that could have avoided this.
Commissioner Matt La, you were showing me something, but they.
I was just saying that there wasn't a tree saying it was the average tree height of the dominant species. Let me recall, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I just, I couldn't.
No, wasn't there, it wasn't the whole beginning. So I apologize.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Are there other questions from Commissioner or you?
I think I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question.
So, um, I mean, I, yeah, I guess now I've seen, now with this letter from the Tribe. And are we waiting for response from Snoke County Tribe or?
I would have thought they would have and, um, we didn't get anything, so.
And so I guess with that, um, I'm not entirely sure how Snoke Tribe's ideas compared to OTAC's findings. But why would we give more weight to OTAC, um, opinions for the, well, compared to what the Tulip, Tulip Tribe has suggested? Why? Because well, a, OTAC or it has analyzed our specific context.
Yeah, so that's what they're putting in about, well, we also have the member farm, okay, farm open space area that provides tremendous protected open space. Uh, we've got the levy system, we have a number of factors that mitigate or change what could otherwise be accomplished with buffers. So.
And our specific code requirements, you know? So what's coming from the agencies and the tribes is more of a statewide approach. And, um, and it's kind of a belief of, I think this is better and I think this is better. And I think you could find a number of ways to support either. And you could say that if there's a comment above, for sure. So we definitely wanted to, um, make sure that, you know, we really gave it a look, that we weren't just dismissing. We knew that these comments were going to come, you know? And that's why the memo specifically addressed, um, some of it, um, ahead of time because we didn't want to look like we were just, now that doesn't matter and didn't analyze it, you know?
Commissioner Teal, again, um, on page 14 of the, um, of the packet, uh, the critical area report. This is C.
So you have it on?
Yeah. Yes, it's. Critical area reports shall address the project climate resiliency within critical areas. So that language, it doesn't feel like there's a lot of teeth, but maybe that's a good thing given like.
Things to change.
You know, the ratio and size distance, you know, like it, the whole thing feels.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's where it comes back to then the critical area professional who's bound by that standard. And then as they, you know, they're a professional and have screenings and professional experience, they then think about how does climate mitigation apply in this circumstance? Maybe I'm only planting some more drop resist trees in here than what I might have otherwise or whatever.
This is a tricky one because I'm all for environmental preservation for sure. But then it's things like that, I'm like, okay, is that going to make development harder? You know, is this just another step that the developers are going to have to do? Which is, you know, the same problem that I'm sure you've been wrestling with because it's a balancing act.
Yeah, and we have, um, like the Mount Sinai Industrial Project, um, which is three, you know, three industrial buildings, um, right up here in the gray. Um, and they're going to have, the proposal is 10 acres of like replanted area and bought with their hands in. And I mean, it's hugely, it's hugely costly to them and 10 years of monitoring and so it's a lot. They're doing more than the minimum then. And that's also a function of sometimes all the land isn't needed for development.
One of the recommendations was to change buffer, the term buffer to the R, uh, the R M Z. So I noticed we still call it buffer in our zone, which I'm fine with. I was wondering if there was a purpose in keeping a buffer versus changing it.
That was a recognition from the letter or from our consultant or from one of the agencies.
Yeah, it's all good. It's on page nine of the packet, page two on there. That first paragraph on the area ecosystems.
They maybe flipped that and had that broader statement that what we were looking for is, is specific recommended updates. That shirt was there. Sure, it was there.
Yeah, I can double check with him on that and make sure I didn't catch it as a clear change to make more of a, yeah, he's citing a document, kind of their approach for why they like that RMZ, because it's more encompassing.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the commission feels that, feels like it's another term, I don't really know.
But first, I think that will calmly understood.
Right.
Right.
Could you address that with maybe a change to a definition? The definition for buffer and call it an RMZ, and that sort of where it's acknowledging that there's maybe a different term between these now? Like, is there a buffer through the rest of the document?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Commissioner Bubbers.
Yeah, sorry.
It's like, it doesn't feel organic, but.
Right.
Myself, for the first week.
Right.
What we say right now.
Buffer, we should.
I know, I did, I didn't know it loud enough.
Yeah, because they don't have a definition for buffer right now, so why don't we add one?
No.
That's a good suggestion. And then, and then it'll be broad in some ways, because there's buffers for a lot of things, but we'll reference that RMZ.
Okay.
That can also, in the future, be, Commissioner Bubbers, that can also be a thing that in the future change, you just eliminate buffer with that future change because you put this reference.
Right.
Because of the comment.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Teal, again, I really liked your language change. It's at the very end, first geologically, I'm really happy with that change. Yeah, and any other things from the planning commission for staff, and then we'll see what's there. I have a question. So, I wish I'd all take it, sorry, Commissioner Ma, I read the packet, and then I read the letter from the Tulala Tribe, and number four confused me. I don't remember the whole thing, but above all critical areas, and then buffers shall not be considered up against land or buildings, so on and so forth. And I thought it was something, so I read it again, and I'm not seeing where that is coming from. But in this packet, feels like we're making the buffers available to building.
Part of it maybe that, and I don't know this, but I kind of suspect their letter is kind of a template that they send out to lots of jurisdictions. So it may not be speaking specifically to the municipal code.
Okay.
But I think generally the principle was a buffer purely and no pressure.
Right.
So not available for stall.
Right.
Other things that sometimes are accommodated in buffers.
Yeah, and I didn't see anything in, it's not something that we specifically address or ignore. I mean, it's, I can agree, I think that's just kind of overarching comment that they have, but it's not directly applicable to any more changes.
Well, why don't we open the public hearing at 6:59? Nobody is here in person, but do we have anyone online that would like to, having a waiting?
Sherri Cooper, would you like to speak for the public hearing?
I'm good, no, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So at 6:59, we will close the public hearing as well. And bring us back to the planning commission for any more questions or clarification or motions. I don't really get into the maps a lot, but I do agree. And that would be, and I was going through the maps, I'm like, it's just so nice that there's somebody with your city that is just on top of it, and it's like, just nice maps, so, thank you, it's great to look at, I think I'll just do go through them, so it was very appreciated.
Glad you like it. I enjoyed it.
Hey, so I don't think we had any more comments. I think the only thing that we really talked about was just adding, yeah, Commissioner Bubbers. And you didn't say anything?
No, like I said, if something comes up, and this, you know, comes back to you, or there's something unexpected, and again, we have the ability to revise regulations at any point. So, yeah.
We're good for today. So we do need a recommendation for.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I will recommend an approval, as Commissioners, you all recommend approval, with the addition of a definition for buffers. We'll recommend approval to the senior consultant. Okay. Second by Commissioner Ma. And any others on favor?
All right.
Aye.
If it passes, we can honestly, you know, easily.
Commissioner Ma's seconded.
And I think that's it. So we will adjourn at 7:01.
Thank you.
Any for joining, Sherri?